Okay, good morning. We're here for Marion County Board of Commissioners Board Session. We're in the Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street Northeast. And as our tradition, would you join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning. It's great to see so many smiling faces. Hopefully, we'll all be smiling as we finish today through the meeting. I'm Commissioner Kevin Cameron, and Commissioner Janet Carlson, and Commissioner Sam Brentano. So, thank you for being here today. Before we get started, I just want to share a little bit about the process that we're going to go through today, and make sure that we're all clear that the agenda, the first thing on the agenda is a public comment, and we have one person signed up for public comment. Under that, and I know why most of you are here, I believe, it's for our action item that's under Public Works, to consider the appeal. And I want to make sure that under the public comment, that you can, the person who's going to represent you would talk about the reasons that you would want us to accept the appeal. Under that public comment period, there will be no record that will be entered into the land use decision, so that comments about that would not want to be made, if that's pretty clear. And then, under the actual action item, we will hear from staff, and there won't be an opportunity for public comment at that particular time. If the board decides to accept and have, accept the appeal, and have a public hearing, at that time is when that public comment would be entered into the record. If I've said that right, I'm looking at legal counsel to make sure that we're doing that right. So, thank you for letting me share a little bit about that. Do you have any other comments, Commissioner?
Yeah, well, maybe to say what you said just a little bit different way, too. Land use is very strictly governed by land use laws in Oregon, and so it's like being in court. I mean, we're in a quasi-judicial setting when we do a land use appeal. So, since we sit here almost like judges, quote unquote, we can't have ex parte contacts. So, people that send us emails, I just send them directly to staff. I don't respond to them, because you wouldn't lobby a judge on a criminal case, if you think about it that way, and you can't lobby the commissioners on a land use case. So, when you come up here, as Commissioner Cameron said, the issue that we're deciding today is strictly whether to accept the appeal or not whether to accept the appeal, and there's a legal basis for that, for accepting appeal, and that is whether there's new evidence or whether the hearings officer heard all of the evidence already. I mean, essentially, that's what we're listening for. So, all of the other comments about whether it's advisable to do this land use proceeding, that's not the issue that we're dealing with today. That will come in a different forum if we determine to accept the appeal. So, what we were hoping is that someone from, that your representative would speak to just the merits of the decision we're making today, and then, as Commissioner Cameron said, none of that will go into the official record that's kept for us to determine the merits of the case later, if that makes sense.
Great. Okay, so, under public comment, we have, is it Tim Edelblut? Tim, if you would like to have a seat right there, and for the record, just introduce yourself, and thank you for being here with us this morning.
Thank you. My name is Tim Edelblut. I'm a neighbor of the proposed solar array in southeast Salem on the corner of Wilsey and Coates. And I would like to say that we feel that we deserve an appeal of the conditional use The neighbors, and who's here that, if you'd stand up, if you're concerned about what's happening in southeast Salem? All right. So, we are concerned about trees and habitat in an oak savanna area that's being destroyed if this project goes forward. We've, we have, we still have concerns despite the testimony and information we've heard from the company regarding groundwater, regarding erosion with removing dozens of these trees, as well as the habitat and the, and the trees themselves. Solar Power, in their own literature, says that they try not to disturb the land and leave it like it was, which obviously can't occur if they destroy all these trees. And we are uncertain what is going to happen with our groundwater in this sensitive area and erosion on the hillside where this is planned, and that is our concerns that we still feel are not completely addressed.
Tim, thank you, and most of that is outlined in your letter that we have in the record, so, thank you very much. Okay, so, our next agenda item is a presentation on Santa Central results. Stacy, I see you smiling, so, I'm going to let you and Lisa, is Lisa here with you, and Kimberly? If you want to come up and give us a presentation on the great results we had from Santa Central. Oh, you're going to use a presentation, so, okay.
Well, good morning, and I am Stacy Brumman from Marion County Business Services, and I am here this morning on behalf of the 2015 Santa Central Committee, and I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to just say a thank you to the people that helped make this happen, to county employees, and just kind of highlight this program. It's amazing the generosity of county employees, and I just really am thankful that I get an opportunity to kind of highlight that. In your packet, you received the thank you booklet that came from the Marion Polk Foster Parent Association, that is pictures of the kids and specific thank yous. I'm going to spend just a minute kind of highlighting the program, kind of where it started, and what our results were this year, and then give Kim Warren Estella Cervantes an opportunity to just share a story or two of how this has directly benefited kids in our community. So, perfect. So, Santa Central partners include the United Way and other community partners with the Marion Polk Foster Parent Association, and I want to give a special thank you, because it allows us to grant wishes to local foster kids, and the program started about 15 years ago in the sheriff's office, and now is run, starting in 2013, through Business Services and the Sunshine Committee. I do want to say a special thank you to the Sunshine Committee, because without them, it would be very difficult to pull this off, and they kind of double as the Santa Central Committee from mid-November to mid-December. And then also to the people out in the departments that help us gather the gifts that make it a smooth transition. It really does make it easier to manage this program every year. So, this year, the 2015 result, county employees donated approximately $10,000 in gifts and money, and it amazes me every year that although there's lots of opportunities for people to participate in lots of different charities, especially around Christmas time, lots of ways to give back to the community, we donate approximately $10,000, whether you bought soup, or you bought breakfast, or you donated money, or bought a gift, county employees give about $10,000 to this program, and I think it's a great thing. In 2014, this allowed us to support 76 families, and the generosity of county employees in 2015 allowed us to support 96 families, and approximately 386 actual children in gifts. And so, that just is a phenomenal thing when you put those numbers down, when kids, when people have opportunities to give to lots of programs, and they choose this one. And so, I like to just say thank you to county employees for their generosity, and to the commissioners for allowing this to kind of continue on. And the next several slides are just enlarged pictures from your thank you book with thank yous, and Estella here is going to share a story specifically about how it's benefited, that she knows personally, of how it's benefited local foster kids in our community.
Hello. I just want to say that not only did we help these families, or, we also have a generic pile from the extra gifts that we get from the sheriff department, and that, and we, that allows us to help children that are coming in. We had four kids come in the 23rd of December, and out of our generic pile from the extra gifts that we got, we were able to help them have a Christmas, and so, I just want to let you guys know that that's some, you know, there are gifts, there are extra gifts, and we use those for children that are coming in, and we also use them for birthday gifts. So, it's not just helping the families that are signing up, but it's helping those that are coming in in the later days of Christmas, so, thank you.
So, thank you, Estella, for sharing that, and thank you to county employees and to the commissioners for allowing and supporting this program. It really does benefit so many kids in our community that really, you think about Christmas, and I can't imagine not being with my family and not having my kids at Christmas. And so, for us to be able to help these kids this time of year is an amazing thing, and I'm just so grateful to the generosity of county employees, and to these, to Kim Warren Estella for kind of coordinating it through the Foster Parent Association, and just the support of this program.
Great. Thank you, thank you very much for the work you do in our community and within Marion County, and the humans, I want to say this, the orientations that you give, and all those things that your department does for not only the employees but outside in the community. Any comments?
No, I'm pleased, I want to thank them for taking the effort, trying to make life a little brighter for some people that can need it, and I encourage you and keep at it.
Absolutely wonderful project, and you did a great job, and the children are the beneficiaries of that work. Thank you.
Just one last comment. This is outside the United Way fundraiser that we do, in addition, this is in addition to that, so, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, well, I think it's, is it your turn?
Yes.
We're on the consent calendar, so, appreciate a motion.
Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on our consent calendar this morning. On that list, under Board of Commissioners, we consider approval of an order that recommends the renewal of Oregon Liquor Control Commission applications. Information Technology, approve an order to adopt new policy number 705 Remote Access. Tax Office, approve an order authorizing the property tax refund to First Republic Bank in the amount of $84,241.67. Treasurer's Office, approve an order for distribution of Chapter 530 Timberlands revenues as required by ORS 530115, and the last Public Works receive hearings officer's recommendation to approve Zone Change Case 15003 Smith.
A second motion?
We have a motion and a second, and any further discussion? And just for those that are here in the audience, that these are, these are items that we have under consent calendar mostly every week, and they're pretty straightforward items, and we'll get them done real quick. So, all those in favor of approval of the consent calendar signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. So, first action item, Business Services, Colleen, there you are in the back, Colleen. Consider approval of Amendment Number 7 to the Master Professional Services Contract with Solarark Architecture and Engineering, Inc., to add $102,600 to our Health and Human Services Construction Project. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Colleen Kunchchafens, Business Services Director. Today, I'm here to discuss the consideration of the Seventh Amendment to our contract for Solarark for the Health Services Building. This amendment modifies the contract for an additional $102,000, which 99,000 of that is for an hourly not-to-exceed fee for construction administration in accordance with the standard of care. Wanted to find standard of care a little bit. Standard of care is defined as those things that are required to protect health, welfare, and safety of the buildings and people, where systems are integral on the approved systems. And that's defined in the state regulations and further defined in our scope and statement of work. The scope divvies up the contract administration work between Solarark, Day CPM, who we've since hired as our owner's rep, and our internal project coordinator, Brandon Crossley. History, when I came to Marion County almost a year ago, the contract was in a holding pattern. We were trying to decide how we wanted, what our intentions were going forward. We brought in Day CPM, and I knew that there'd be some redundant services, that I wanted Day to handle versus what I wanted Solarark to handle. So, what we came up with was, in your packet you'll see, is a spreadsheet that shows you how we divvied up that work, so that part of that was, we were already paying Day for, and I didn't want to pay Solarark for as well. So, we divvied it up and set apart what we had to do under the standards of care per the state rule. So, the scope would, was going to be somewhat duplicated, and this was the effort to fix that. So, about a month ago, we worked towards fixing that and understanding what each of scope of work was going to be. The additional $3,000 was designing unforeseen condition that was unknown at the time of design, so that's the $102,000 that we're asking for. Any questions or comments?
Good. Anything?
I don't have any questions. Well, yeah, I do have one question. Where's the money coming from?
It's coming from the project contingency.
Okay, so, we have enough to cover it then out of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, it's in the budget as a contingency, okay?
So, you ready for a motion?
All right. I am.
You okay? All right. So, I would move that we approve Amendment Number 7 to the Master Professional Services Contract with Solarark Architecture and Engineering, Inc., to add $102,600 and construction administration for the Health Services Building renovation project.
Second motion?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. And we're going to have a newly remodeled health department extending the life of that building, so appreciate the work that's being done out there. Next item on the agenda is under Public Works, receive and consider appeal of hearings officer's decision approving conditional use CU 15-35 Northwest Energy 16 LLC in Coates. Joe Finimore, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Finimore, this item before you today is a conditional use to establish a solar array power generation facility on a 44-acre parcel zoned SA located at 6221 Coates Drive Southeast in Salem. The original, the request, the request was originally approved by the planning director. That decision was appealed to the hearings officer. Hearings officer conducted a public hearing on November 4th, 2015, and on January 22nd, 2016, issued a decision approving the conditional use subject to conditions. On February 7th, the hearings officer's decision was appealed to the board. Three issues raised in the appeal are raised in the appeal. The first is that the property is in an SGO, Significant, Significant, Sensitive Groundwater Overlay Zone. The hearings officer discusses the SGO overlay zone and concludes that it only applies to development permits for new land uses that rely on water from exempt wells. And since the proposed facility does not use water, the provisions in the overlay zone do not apply. In finding 23 on page 19, beginning on page 19, the hearings officer concludes that the proposal will have no significant adverse impact on groundwater. The opponent argues that water will be used during construction and to clean panels, and based on a letter from a consultant, impacts on groundwater recharge of the aquifer from grading, soil compaction, soil hardening, runoff, and soil erosion should be evaluated in order to determine whether there will be significant adverse impact on groundwater. Secondly, the opponent argues that multiple neighbors in the surrounding area testify they will be negatively impacted by the installation of an industrial use that will be an ice orb. They indicate that at the hearing a request was made, that if the use was approved, that it be screened from neighboring prop, the condition be included, that be screened from neighboring property owners. That suggested condition was not carried forward by the hearings officer, and is not part of the approval. Furthermore, they indicate the proposed facility is unacceptably incompatible with the neighborhood, and that this location is unsuitable. Lastly, the opponent discusses the impact the facility will have on wildlife habitat. Specifically, they refer to a letter by Restoration Biologists, which indicates the property contains open-grown savanna oaks, and that destruction of this habitat will have the long, will have a long-term negative impact on wildlife in the area. Conclusion of the applicant states that should the board choose to, to adopt the, excuse me, accept the appeal and approve the conditional use, the conditions be added, requiring vegetations, vegetative screening to reduce the visual impact on neighbors, a water study of the area by a professional geologist, registered geologist, to evaluate the impact of the facility on the aquifer and existing wells in the area, and that more of the old oak trees throughout the property be preserved. The board has the following options: accept the appeal, remand the matter back to the hearings officer; this will require an agreement from the applicant to extend the 150-day decision-making deadline; accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing; the suggested hearing date is March 9th, 2016; deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision approving the request. And I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
Questions?
We might start out, if I could, with one simple one. Talked about the applicant's desire to extend and willingness to sign for that extension if it be sent it to the hearings officer.
The applicant's attorney I talked to yesterday indicated they believe, they believe the decision that they have is sound, they don't think, they don't think going back to the hearings officer will, will help them at all, so they're, they're not willing to sign that agreement to do the extension.
And if they won't, then that's not truly an option, or how would you?
It's an option, but there are consequences to that option.
And describe those, could you?
So, if the county does not make a decision within 150 days, then the applicant can go to court, and I think it's called a mandamus, Gloria can help me out there.
That's correct.
And basically, the judge can decide to allow the use because the decision wasn't made on, in a timely manner.
Right. Explain to me, what day are we on right now, and what's, what is?
The 150-day deadline is March 16th.
Okay, so, how does that, so, you're saying that if we remand it to the hearings officers, there's too much time?
There's not enough time for the hearings officer to have another, consider the new evidence and issue a new decision that could then be appealable to the board.
So, what if we accepted it as a board matter? Is there enough time for that, or not?
Yes, you can have the hearing on the 9th, and make a decision at that point.
So, the issue is they're not willing to extend time for an appeal?
For a remand to the hearings officer.
Okay, and so, we would have to have it at the board level if we were going to try to put that condition on?
Correct.
Okay. Did we say what you were going to say?
That's correct, and Mr. Chair Commissioners, just interpreted the writ of mandamus, the potential consequences other than a judge could order approval of the condition for not having made, or approval of the application for not having made a decision in time. There's also an exposure for attorney fees if they do that, as well as not having local control over what conditions might be approved by the judge if the judge did approve that application.
So, that, Gloria, that may answer my question, then, so, the 150 days, the approval, they're going to, they said they would not approve the 150-day extension, an extension?
To, for a remand to the hearings officer. If you accept the appeal and have a public hearing, and they need, and issues come up, they can agree at that time to extend the record, to extend 150 days for, for your continued review.
So, based on their acknowledgement that they wouldn't, wouldn't accept it going back to the hearings officer, the consequences, and I'm just trying to clarify those consequences in my mind, the consequences are, the risk is, they can now take it to court, and a judge would, would say, a judge would say, no, we're going to move forward based on what's here, and their attorney fees now, we are liable for because we didn't do our, our obligation within the 150-day mark. Is that an accurate picture?
Mr. Chair, that's, that's pretty darn close. It's, basically, the, the judge would approve the application for not having made the decision in time, that's how the statute reads, with very limited exceptions. So, if, it's the, the stick to make sure counties proceed in expeditious fashion through the land use process.
Let me clarify one more point. So, you said the judge would approve because everything's shown approval?
Likely, the judge would approve it, because the way the statute says is that the application will be approved if you don't make the decision within the 150 days, with very limited exceptions.
Yeah, so, it's a, the statute defaults to approval?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Other question?
Yeah, I got four other questions.
Go right ahead, Commissioner.
So, I warned you, but I didn't tell you what the questions were going to be, but I think you can answer all of these.
All right.
All right, so, I'm looking at both the letter and the hearings officer's report. So, the, I have a couple general questions, then I want to go into the, the two of the items in the letter. So, the first question generally is, if the board were to accept the appeal, and it comes to the board level, and if the applicants have not challenged a particular topic during the hearings officer's hearing, do they have the opportunity to do that? Okay, so, let me just give you an example, where I was reading. On page 16, number 12 of the hearings officer's report, it talks about, I'm sorry, number 13, it says, "Applicant provided construction and post-construction preliminary stormwater and erosion control documents with explanations and supporting calculations prepared by an engineer." It says, "These calculations have not been challenged." So, it seems like in the letter, they're suggesting that erosion control in this creates another problem, and which I'll get into in a minute. If they didn't challenge these calculations in the initial hearing, can they come back in the hearing and challenge them now? That's my question.
I believe the hearing is de novo, everything is, everything is challengeable.
All right, so, we're not limited in the hearing to say, well, because you didn't challenge it in the first place, you can't challenge it now?
That is correct, yes.
All right. Then the second question, going back up to number 12, and this is just, right, and again, the purpose of this discussion today is to determine whether or not we'll accept the appeal. We're not talking about the merits. But I just want to understand a little bit better, when the hearings officer says, "Once built, the facility will be fairly passive," what does fairly mean, all right? Can you maybe describe a little bit about the facility itself and what that entails, and why she said fairly passive rather than passive?
I believe, I can try and interpret that, but I believe they're talking about, it's not going to emit smells, it's not going to be moving, there will be no, there will be some sound that's talked about in there. There's not, there's not dust generated. Once it's there, it's there, the activity is clean, the panels once in a while, from what I understand.
Do they use any water at all, or do they?
I do not have that information.
All right, so, we don't know whether they use water or not?
I, we do not know whether they use water, and if they do, we don't know if it's from an exempt onsite well, or if they bring it with them to use.
Okay, so, that's something that if we accepted the appeal, we could clarify?
The applicant could address, yes.
Right, okay. And so, then moving into the item, seems like item number 23 on the hearings officer's report is where the letter focuses primarily, which is significant adverse impact, and so, the first, so I have two questions on that. The first is that the letter from the, the appeal letter from the opponents talks about the, the area being in a state and county designated Sensitive Groundwater Overlay, Limited Groundwater Area. And in your initial comments, you talked about it not being a residential development that we're looking at here, and then the hearings officer's report says the property's within an SGO zone, but no residential development is proposed, and that's the end of the conversation. So, if, so, with the recharge issue, which, it's been a while since we've dealt with Sensitive Groundwater Overlay, it was Commissioner Brentano, I think it's one of his first board sessions, memorable, it lasted till 3:30 in the afternoon with no break, trying to figure out how that works. The issue about whether or not existing wells will be affected by the addition of a new well, does that not apply to an industrial type of development if it impacts residential? Would it have to be a residential development in order for us to consider this?
All right, I think, I think we're actually talking about two very similar things, or a little bit different.
Okay.
The SGO zone itself was to, was to regulate uses that use water.
Right.
In the SGO zone areas. So, if you were doing a house, or if you were doing a, creating a subdivision or additional properties to build on, you had to have a water study done showing that you're not going to have an adverse impact. It did not specifically talk about, the SGO's overlay itself does not specifically talk about groundwater and groundwater recharge.
Okay.
However, one of the conditions-
But, but most of the studies that we got, that were about the SGO zone, did talk about recharge.
Correct, and, and the water study that the hydrogeologist does determine there's adequate water is based on the, on the recharge information that's provided by the state, I believe, Water Resources. This particular finding, 23, is in response to one of the criteria, and it's kind of the- based on the, on the recharge information that's provided by the state, I believe, Water Resources. This particular finding, 23, is in response to, to one of the criteria, and it's kind of the, if I can find it here, just a second. On the, page 18, finding 20, are the, are the specific criteria in the SA zone?
What page?
Page 18, and finding 20. And these are the, these are the impact criteria. So actually, if you look at, number five says, "Use will not have a significant adverse impact," oh, I'm sorry, not, not five, three. "The use will not have a significant adverse impact on watersheds, groundwater, fishing, wildlife habitat, soil and slope stability, air and water quality." So when she's looking at finding 23, she's making a finding that, that, that particular criteria is, is met, based on the information that she reviewed.
Uh-huh. So that it wouldn't have a significant impact on groundwater even though it's in a sensitive groundwater overlay area?
Correct. Based on the information that she was given at the hearings.
Okay. But she only responds, so she, what, so again, this kinda gets back to evidence. So there wasn't enough evidence provided that the groundwater was limited, or that there'd be an adverse impact, and so it would be, the burden would be on the opponents to provide additional evidence if they believe that that's the case?
Correct.
All right. And, and there wasn't any water study in the hearings officer's hearing, or no discussion about that?
Correct.
Or statistics from Water Resources Department, anything like that? Okay, then the second question that I had is under the same item. It says Marion County, what does CP stand for, MCCP?
Comprehensive Plan.
Comprehensive Plan, thank you. Identified big game and wildlife habitat areas are the county's concern. So in the letter, it talks about, and we heard today in the comments, the Audubon Society birds, are birds part of Marion County's wild, big game and wildlife habitat plan in the comprehensive plan?
No, the, the big game wildlife, wildlife habitat that you're talking about was adopted by the state. The county adopted it as part of its comprehensive plan, and it applies to area, it controls dwelling densities in the, in the habitat area, mostly in the Silverton Hills, East County area, no more than one house per 80 acres, unless it's peripheral habitat, then you can go one house per 40 acres. That is the only mapped habitat that we have in our comprehensive plan.
Right. So if the argument was brought forward that it was gonna destroy bird habitat, there's nothing in our plan that says that that matters, is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Other than the general criteria that I read to you before, where it says, well...
And then, I guess the other question that I have in terms of the trees, 'cause I know there's been a lot of concern expressed about the trees, and this was in the newspaper, and I'll put on the record that I read the newspaper article, I think that's acceptable to do. If it takes, so the, the property is, I can't remember how many acres.
Forty-four.
Right, large parcel of property, and then it said somewhere in here that the facility's up is around 12, right?
Correct, minimum of 12.
So it doesn't take up the whole thing. So was there any discussion, or any condition, or any, any statement of commitment on the part of the applicants to say that they would try to preserve as many trees as possible, or was, did that come up in the hearing, or?
I did not see that anywhere in the, in the hearing.
Okay.
In the information I looked for.
And then my last question is, I know I said I had five, but I had subs on the...
You're fine, you're fine.
My last question is, so say that, so this is zone SA, is that right?
Special agriculture, correct.
Okay. So you can actually build either residential, or you can use, do farming on it, right? Without a conditional use?
You can do farm uses, dwellings have to be permitted, the same as the EFU zone, based on the farmable, the farm income produced on the property, non-farm dwellings, those kinda things. So they do, a dwelling does require a separate review.
But you could, someone could purchase the property and decide they were gonna have a hazelnut farm on it, or something like that, and they could do a commercial use in conjunction with farm use and do that? Would that have to be permitted, or how would that work?
The hazelnut will be permitted outright. You could also prepare your own product, so you could do your packaging, cleaning, sorting, those kinda things. If you wanted to do other products out of hazel nuts, it would require a conditional use for a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use.
I guess my point would be that, depending on who purchased the property, whether they wanted to do other industrial-like facilities could go on the property without even the board approving it necessarily, if it was commercial use in conjunction with farm use.
Correct. There are a lot of uses associated with farm use.
That could create noise and cut down trees and all of that.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that's my, those are my questions.
Okay. Your turn.
Why? I've already asked a question.
Oh, okay. Did you have any others? I'm sorry.
A statement, I'd look for a question from you first. Are there any others that I would like to opportunity?
Well, just a follow-up.
Tell you what I'm thinking.
Follow-up to the, if you're okay?
Sure.
Follow-up to Commissioner Carlson's question there, and, on the agricultural things that would be outright permitted. What was the total acreage, I, I think it was 100, was it 144? It's a pretty substantial piece of property, but this is being carved off for this, right?
It's 44 acres.
Forty-four acres. Could, could somebody apply to put a residence on that particular 44 acres?
They, if there's not a dwelling on the property now, they could go through the process, and depending on, I think it's predominantly non-high bios soils, although there's some on the property, so they, they could farm it and grow a certain amount of income, they could possibly get a, get a dwelling on it.
Okay. And if that was the case, they would be able to go for a, a well permit to, to run that particular, or even the agricultural manufacturing that Commissioner just referred to, a hazelnut processing plant for their farm?
I'm not sure how water rights work for that.
Okay.
So, because you're in the, the SGO area is also a state designated limited groundwater area, so as far, from what I understand, they do limit, or have not been allowing new wells, permitted wells in that area. But that's up to, that's totally under state regulation, we have no control over that.
Good.
Okay, well, Mr. Chair, maybe I should play my hand first, so, so I, you know, I think that there is additional evidence that could be presented at a hearing. I came in here thinking maybe we would wanna remand it, I was, then with the new information we got today about the time limit, that seems like that's not a possibility. I'm particularly interested in the groundwater issue, the fact that we don't know whether or not they're gonna, where they're gonna get their water, how much water they're gonna use. The second thing is that even if we were to approve the applicant's, application, I would like to at least consider the condition that was requested and discussed, but not included in the hearings officer's decision around, you know, what, what it's, I can't remember how it's phrased, but exactly what the...
The plannings, or?
Right, yeah, exactly. So screen, screening a chain link fence, or, you know, whatever, and just to find out exactly what their plans are around that, and see if they're willing to do something. It said somewhere that I read that they had expressed an interest in doing that at the hearing, but it wasn't included as a condition, so that we could explore that. So, I'm not gonna make a motion until I hear whether or not I have someone who'd be willing to second it, but maybe we could just make comments, start there. So that would be where I'm at with it.
Chair Cameron, if I could, huh? I always like to please everybody, but sometimes I can't. So, let me just say upfront that I would be voting against accepting the appeal, but I wouldn't be opposed to looking at a couple things, some of which Commissioner Carlson has mentioned. The two, I should go back further. I spent a lot of time on this, I read it closely, I look at the things, but especially the responses from the neighborhood, or if you want to satisfy those requests, you have to do it outside of our ordinances and make up new rules, and I think all of us know that that isn't what it is. It isn't just whether you like something or someone, and you make up rules to conform. I don't find a way we can do that, seriously. But, back to the point I was trying to make, there are two that I would think that would be better if we did review it again, and the one was the screening, especially in front of the households, should've been easy to address and should've been included, but it isn't overwhelming to me, but I just think it could be better. And the second had to do with, and we didn't discuss it much, Joe, and if you have some information, why I'd add on, had to do with the question of bonding, or just requiring a personal guarantee. And if it's me, and if we have the ability, I would prefer a bond, and I'll tell you why. This is, has to do with when the project is closed up, finished, whatever. So you can imply that it no longer is economically feasible, that's why they're not doing it any, any further, that means less money available. I'd like to know that there's a source of fund, of money available right on hand to make sure that cleanup's done, not deal with the financial conditions of an individual, or heirs, or whoever else. I'd like to know that that's addressed. So, those are the two things, if you did review it, I'd look at, but I have to be clear, I'll be voting no.
So, why is everybody looking at me? I'm pretty much with, with the, the Commissioner, would like to make sure everybody's happy, and you always can't do that, but I, after reading, you know, as, as we all did, reading the whole decision, and then reading the letter from the constituents, something I highlighted, and, and I wanna clarify again, that the third sentence in their letter to the county commissioner says, "New evidence has come to our attention since the open record period was closed." Is that an accurate statement, Joe?
That is accurate. The letter from the biologist, restaurant, excuse me, the hydrogeologist's letter, and, and from the biologist, that's information that they did not obtain until after the hearing.
Right. So my initial thought, after I reviewed everything before coming in here today and listening to counsel, and my initial thought was to refer this back to the hearings officer with that new evidence in hand, to see if there was a, a further decision that would be made, but after listening to counsel and the potential liability that is, is sitting in front of us, I'm, I'm not apt to accept that liability on the county's behalf. So, but then I, I have two other things. Because of, in that letter, one was the water issue, further clarification of the groundwater issue. I, I'm trying to imagine, I know I, well, I won't, I won't get into the details, but I have a well and, and got a little scared this summer, but I'm trying to imagine how runoff from solar panels would negatively impact that groundwater if, if the conditions were set up accurately to, to retain that groundwater, but, and it recharges. But I'd like to hear more about that. And then the screening clarification, obviously, what are the conditions around the screening of what it actually looks like? And in that screening process, is there a way that we, and maybe, maybe we can't put conditions on it? That's something I'd like you to tell me, conditions to screen, as well as maybe if there's some of these oak trees that could be kept in that process? Is there a way that, through, that we could potentially have that?
You can look at, "Conditions set forth required," let's see.
Page number?
Page 11, number nine. Conditions set forth below required to meet applicable criteria, so if you can, if you can tie those to a specific criterion, you can, you can add a condition that way, protecting the public health, safety, welfare, protecting the health, safety, or welfare of persons working or residing in the area, and protecting property or improvements in the neighborhood. So it would need to be somehow related to that.
Okay.
Or agreed to by the, or agreed to by the applicant.
Okay.
I don't know of a way to necessarily say where they have to put the facility on the property.
All right.
Just one comment, if I could. I'd rather not say it, but as far as I'm concerned, trees are personal property, and the owner of that property can do what he wants, so to make conditions is outside of our rules.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and also Commissioner's previous thought was if I put a hazelnut farm there, I can cut down any trees I want to make room for those hazelnut, that, that farm, so nobody can stop me from doing that.
Right. Or whatever other kinda farm you might have.
Right, okay.
But, he did comment that the water would be a mitigating factor, and the water is the piece that's kinda the open question right now.
Right.
So should I make a motion?
Uh, sure.
All right, and we'll see how it plays.
I'll entertain a motion.
All right, Mr. Chair, well, let me just, well, let me, I'll make a motion, and then I'll ask a question. So I move that the board accept the appeal and schedule a hearing date, and this is where I'm gonna ask a question, of March 9th. Now, Joe, March 9th is the day where we're doing the State of the County in Woodburn, and we need to be leaving here by 11:30 at the very latest, probably 11:15, which would limit our public hearing to less than two hours, which would almost guarantee, I think, with the crowd we see here today and what we've heard, that we would have to continue it on to the 16th, which is the last and final day. So, is, with notices, March 2nd's out of the question, is that right?
March 2nd is not out of the question, however, the appellant is going, is going to not be in the country during that, during that time.
Ah.
So that was the reason for the, for the 9th.
If I could, and there has to be some time for people to gather this information the Commissioner's looking for on water, and I don't-
Right.
-know how you do it that quickly.
So the appellant is gonna have to be willing to, to continue the hearing, and so, we'll make the motion, and if we have to adjust that?
And I will check with the, with the applicant, and let them know that-
Right, applicant's, right.
That, that it is, will, there's a good possibility that, that we won't get through the hearing that day and it will be continued.
We won't get through the hearing, right?
Through the hearing that day.
We'll get to it, but not through it.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And I will let him know that, and if he would, would, if he would choose to grant an extension to, to have the hearing at a later time, we can, we can, they can bring that back to you and reschedule it.
Right. Or, yeah, I mean, we could have it on the 16th.
On the 16th.
At least, there's nothing, no, on my calendar, I don't-
I won't be here on the 16th.
Okay, Commissioner Cameron won't be here on the 16th, so-
All right.
So we probably need to-
Wait a minute, I guess I will be.
You will be here on the-
It's the week before that I'm-
Oh, you were actually gone on the 9th?
Yep.
All right. That'll be interesting.
So, prefer to have it on the 16th, for me, but...
I, we can, we can do it on the 16th, if, but we need to understand that if you, you need to make a decision, or else the applicant will need to grant an extension if, if it's to be continued.
Right. Well, if we, if we're on the 16th, we should have three commissioners, which I think would be essential, number one. Number two, we don't have anything, I don't, did you say anything on the noon hour that would preclude us from going through the entire hearing?
I'm sure there'll be a lot of places I'd rather be, but if that counts.
All right, fine, I don't have to be anywhere till 2, so, okay, so, should we put it on the 16th, then?
Okay.
All right, so, I'll revise my motion, say we accept the appeal, bring it before the board, and with a suggested hearing date of Wednesday, March 16th.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Right, no?
No.
Okay, motion passes. We'll have a public hearing on the 16th.
Thank you.
And then I just, I wanna reiterate something that Commissioner Carlson said at the beginning, that those of you that are here, please do not send information to us as commissioners individually, or talk to us individually about the issue. You wanna make sure it goes to Joe, so it'll be in the record for all of us in making those decisions. Joe?
The only information you want to submit, submit to me, and the board's office, we will copy each other. Everything will be, will be included in the board's packet, as well, they'll look at the entire file that we have also. Comments we you received this week during the record close period will be added to the, will be added to that file.
All right.
Okay, so we are done with our official business. I will read this week's calendar into the record. If you wanna see all the places we're going to appear, just don't talk about land use when we're there. You're welcome to join us. Further, today, at 10 o'clock, we are gonna go join Congressman Kirk Schrader at the Chemeckata Center for Business and Industry on 626 High Street Northeast, in room 102. Later on this afternoon, present service awards to IT Department here on the fourth floor, in the HR Training Room. Later on, from 4 to 6, Willamette, Mid, Willamette Homeless Initiative Task Force. Commissioner Carlson is leading that from a county perspective, along with other city leaders. That is gonna be at the Salem Public Library, in the Anderson Room, 585 Liberty Street in Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 18th, from 8 to 9, we have a meeting with the City of Salem and the county at the Sassy Onion Grill, 1244 State Street, Salem. Good food, looking forward to it, they're reopened. Also tomorrow, from 2 to 4, Budget Committee meeting, location in the Senate Hearing Room, right here, where we're sitting today. Monday, the 22nd, from 8:30 to 9, the Board of Commissioners' Calendar Review in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor here in this building. Also Monday, from 9 to 11 o'clock, a management update in the Silverton Conference Room here in this building. Monday, the 22nd, also from 11 to 12, Board of Commissioners' Chief Administrative, executive BOC, CAO, executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 192.660. Location in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Also Monday, the 22nd, from 3 to 4, one-on-one department head elected officials meeting with Fay Fagel from Juvenile, here on the fifth floor. Wow, I need to take a drink, it's a long calendar this week. On the 23rd, Tuesday, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., Commercial Real Estate Economic Development Forum in the San Am Ballroom at the Salem Conference Center, 200 Commercial Street Southeast. Also on the 23rd, Tuesday, from 8:30 to 10:00 a.m., Community Corrections Board Meeting, located here in this building, in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Also on the 23rd, 10:30 to 11:30, Marion County Housing Authority Board Meeting, location in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, 55 Court Street here, in this building on the fifth floor. The 24th, Wednesday, at 9:00 a.m., we'll be back here for a board session in this exact room. And then on the 24th, we have CCTV, Capital Community Television Taping, location at 130, at the CCTV office, 575 Trade Street. Also on Wednesday, from 3 to 3:30, Job Council Meeting at the Insight Boardroom on 626 High Street Northeast. And on the 24th, also from 4 to 5, a work session, Chamecada Partnership, location in Silverton Conference Room here in this building. So, anything new, different? I thought it was really interesting that we got a letter from a company here in town that's laying off 51 employees come April 15th. And on the same day I read that letter, we also heard that minimum wage got passed at the Oregon House, which will really not help those people find new jobs.
Just read an article in the Seattle area, how restaurants are closing up and moving out with the same $15. They just don't seem to get it. One thing you didn't mention, I have mentioned outside, but one of the events that I guess I'm the only one going, planning on being there, is the Silverton Chamber Awards, Norton Garden, getting business of the year. Pretty proud of that, and that's one of the fun things we get to do. So if you're bored, Saturday night, actually, this is a little bit of a problem, it's held at the Fest Hall in Mount Angel, but, don't ask me why.
The Silverton Awards in Mount Angel?
It's one inclusive community.
Okay.
That's why I like the state of the sublimity chambers.
And we don't have very much time, if we're supposed to be.
Over in, see, see the Commissioner. Congressman, so we just want to thank you all for being here today and participating in the process, as much as we let you. We'll see you on the 16th, I'm sure. And with that, I think we will adjourn.